Regular meeting number 18 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Page, please lead us in the pledge.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, infinite and eternal.
Monsignor?
Let us pray. Lord God, as the members of Columbus City Council meet this evening in session to conduct the business of our city, they ask your guidance as they discern together what's best for the common good of the citizens of our city. Help them to be especially attentive to the needs of those who have no power or influence: the poor, the humble, the elderly, the homeless, and the voiceless. While it may be easy to overlook them, they deserve the attention and concern of those who help them, including ourselves. In all things, Lord, our councilmembers ask for your blessing. May all of us remember to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, recognizing the great public trust and responsibility they have received, and doing all we can to assist them in their work on our behalf. Amen.
Thank you, Monsignor Cody. For a second there, I thought I was gonna have to lead us in the National Anthem.[168.12][168.12](Laughter) That would've cleared out council chambers quickly. Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda, be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the records, city clerk?
No, not at this time.
At this time, I request the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda: in economic development, 0848-2016; and resolution 0083X-2016. Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Yes. I would like to present, recognize, and congratulate Chief, Police Chief Kim Jacobs for being named the YWCA Woman of Achievement for 2016. Whereas the YWCA Columbus annually honors a select group of Columbus women who have made extraordinary contributions to their families, workplace, and communities; and whereas Chief Jacobs began her exemplary career with the Columbus Division of Police in 1979; and whereas Chief Jacobs was the first woman in the history of the Columbus Division of Police to be promoted to Commander in 1995, and to Deputy Chief in 2009; and whereas in 2012, Chief Jacobs became the first woman and the first open LGBT community member to serve as Chief of Police in Columbus; and whereas during her tenure, Chief Jacobs has been committed to improving the operations of the division, she has acted as a catalyst for initiatives such as the Division Citizen Police Academy, creation of the fifth radio talk group to reduce radio chatter, implementation of a separate domestic violence report, and complete reorganization of the Internal Affairs Bureau to investigate all citizen complaints; and whereas Chief Jacobs represented the city of Columbus in 2010 when she hosted President Obama at the graduation ceremony of the Division of Police's 114th recruit class; and whereas Chief Jacobs represents the Columbus Division of Police locally as a board member for the Center for Family Safety and Healing in the state of Ohio, serving on the Ohio Peace Officer Training Commission, and nationally as a member of the Major City Chiefs Association. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby express its appreciation for the outstanding contributions that you have made by Chief Jacobs to the city of Columbus, and this council congratulates her on receiving the honor of being named a YWCA Woman of Achievement. President Klein, I would also like to add my own comments with regards to the chief before I move for adoption. I would like to add that Chief Jacobs embodies the core values of the Columbus Division of Police: professionalism, respect, integrity, discipline, enthusiasm. She adheres to these values with purpose, passion, and pride in both her personal and professional life. If there are any comments by my colleagues?
Well, Councilmember Brown, I just wanted to join you in honoring Chief Jacobs. You certainly are a woman of achievement in our community, leading police force of the 15th largest city in the country, and especially last year as we had the work that you did in going out to the community and having those community conversations really gave me great pride in our police and in your leadership, and I'm so excited for your Woman of Achievement this year.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
If there are no other comments, I'm sorry, Council President?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I just wanted to echo the complimentary comments that are made to you, chief. We're proud of you. We're honored that you serve as our chief. We know that it's not an easy job, but you do it with distinction, you do it with professionalism, and you do it with the community in mind, always knowing that whether it's the Police Department, City Hall, the Fire Department, you can always strive to be better. And you work and push the people underneath you, the men and women of the Columbus Division of Police, to do that. So congratulations on being honored for the YWCA Woman of Achievement.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I move to amend, amendment as submitted to the clerk.
Second?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for adoption as amended.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. The floor is yours, chief.
Thank you. Council President Klein, Councilmember Brown, and all councilmembers, thank you so much for this recognition. I'm standing here today because I work with about 2,300 men and women of achievement. And, you know, 36 years ago, I had no idea I'd be standing in a place such as this, being recognized, where some of the things that have happened within my tenure in my, with the Division of Police, I am very proud to lead that group of people, and I'm excited to be so fully supported by council. We have a difficult job at times, but it's a job that all of us do serve with passion and pride. And so it means an awful lot to me that we're able to do this with the support of council and knowing that we are serving for the greater good. So again, I truly appreciate the support and the recognition.
President Klein, thank you. Tonight I have resolution 83X-2016 to recognize the 195th anniversary of the independence of Greece and celebrate the contributions of Greek-Americans to the city of Columbus. Move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second? Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for adoption as amended.
Second? Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration, audited orian, representative from the Treasurer's Office or the City Attorney's Office? I don't see anyone here from the municipal court. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Okay, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Economic Development Committee, ordinance 866-2016; Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 755-2016; Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 212-647-677-724-806-2016; Zoning Committee, ordinances 839-840-855-856-877-886-2016; and ordinance 1339-2015.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee, ordinances 740-749-778-850 and 899-2016; Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances 424-579-803 and 818-2016; Economic Development Committee, ordinances 641-786 and 838-2016; Public Safety Committee, ordinances 569-675-700-710-2016; Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 784 and 890-2016; Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 375-2016; Housing Committee, ordinances 604 and 878-2016; Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 421-679 and 712-2016; Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinances 729 and 730-2016; Appointments from the Mayor's Office, numbered A0022-2015, A0039-4243-4449, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, and 56-2016.
Thank you, clerk. We do have two speakers on the consent agenda. The first one is Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins? Looks like you've signed up to speak in favor of 0604-2016?
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of Sully Vacant and Development, probably North London area. I would just love to see more money, instead of $150,000, up to $385,000. And I would just would like to know what this money's gonna be used for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. If Ms. Freed, you could follow up with Mr. Wilkins during the break, we'd appreciate it. The next speaker is Bill Huffman. Welcome back to council. Looks like you've signed up to speak in favor of 0604-2016?
Yes, sir, I am here. Thank you, President Klein, councilmembers. Just wanted to know to thank our new mayor, Gunther, for his participation in helping get the administration turned around so that we could get some work done out on the hilltop. There are changes coming, we see it, we know there's more to come, and we want to know, councilmembers, that we appreciate what you guys have done for us and look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. There are no other consent speakers, so may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Consent action carries. We'll now proceed with the reading of, with second reading of 30-day table to emergency legislation. The first committee is the Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This, as I'm talking here, if our speaker, Patty Huddle, could make her way to the podium, please. This ordinance is number 636-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Columbus 2020 for economic development activities associated with business relocation, expansion, and retention, as well as other activities related to the city of Columbus' continued interest in workforce development, marketing, and entrepreneurship, to authorize the expenditure of $700,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. And before moving for passage, thank you so much, Patty Huddle, for coming down to council to talk to us about the work that Columbus 2020 does and what it is that our resources are going to support.
Very good. President Klein, Councilwoman Brown, it's a pleasure for us to be here and to continue the partnership that we've had with the city of Columbus. Before we look forward, I thought we might look back at what we've done in the prior year with the investment made by the city of Columbus in our organization. Having spoken to Kenny McDonald, our CEO, in prior years, I suspect you're very familiar with our baseline where we start every meeting, and that is defining our goals for the year 2020. And so I will give a report out on where we are in performance to those goals.
Thank you.
And this is for the region level. We have a goal of creating 150,000 net new jobs by the year 2020. As of the end of this past year, we are at 111,000 net new jobs. That brings us to about 74% of the goal, the 10-year goal. We have a goal of stimulating $8 billion in capital investment, and as of the end of last year, we're in excess of over $7 billion in fixed asset investment that's tracked related to projects that we've worked with. That puts us at almost 89% of goal for the 10-year goal. And then we've also established a goal to increase per capita income by 30% by the year 2020. In 2015, the average annual salary for the new jobs created and retained, committed in 2015, the, let's see, it was $50,945,000 was the average salary, which is about 32.9% above the 2010 baseline that was established. So we wanted to drill in and really look at what's been happening within the city of Columbus proper, to demonstrate where we are contributing to the city's thriving regional economy. In 2015, over 40 projects were announced. The majority of those projects were expansions of existing companies. 6,200 jobs consisting of 1,800 new jobs and 4,500 retained jobs were committed. Over $218 million in capital investment was also committed. And if we look at that from a commercial property tax standpoint, that translates into about $6.5 million in property tax revenue. The average wage for the new and retained jobs committed in 2015 was in excess of $60,000, which is about 57% above the 2010 baseline established when we launched this initiative. $375 million was committed in aggregate wages for new and retained jobs, which translates into nearly $10 million in state income tax and just about $9.5 million in municipal income tax in the city of Columbus. Translating that income into disposable income for retail spending, we estimate about $99.2 million of taxable retail spending in the region was established from the wages cited earlier, and that translates into about $5.7 million in state sales tax revenue and about $1.7 million in county and coda, the public transit, sales tax revenue. From a regional standpoint, we would be remiss if we didn't mention Amazon as a project that will have a very large impact on the city of Columbus, even though their operations didn't cite in the city proper. That will be really a transformational project for the Columbus region and for the city going forward. We're very, very proud of the work that has been happening at Rickenbacker in conjunction with the city of Columbus staff, CRAA, and private industry collaboration. As a result of the work that went on last year, we have shipments that are going on on a weekly basis to Hong Kong, Luxembourg, and Dubai. Another proud recognition is the collaboration that's going on from a marketing standpoint and the One of Us brand launch. Just last week, I believe, CRAA hosted an event at the airport to showcase the branding that's happening. And for the first time, we've got eight private sector companies who have participated in funding that branding initiative to gain recognition for the city of Columbus as home to some of those just excellent private sector employers in the region. The campaign at the airport includes print and digital advertising throughout the airport, but also branding on the jetways, so both onboarding and offboarding passengers can see, number one, the recognition, this is city of Columbus, which I don't think we did a great job of promoting that as we had passengers coming and going through the airport, but also the vitality that we have here through visuals. From a business development and attraction standpoint, last year, we conducted 62 business development trade missions, 26 of those in U.S. locations and nine in international markets. 2016, so let's look forward to what we hope to do this year. We hit the ground running, and in the first quarter of this year, we already conducted six domestic trips and six international trips to Canada, China, Italy, Japan, Korea, and Singapore. Upcoming, we have the Hanover Trade Fair, which is the world's largest manufacturing exhibit, China, Western Europe, and then we'll be heading back to the West Coast at the end of April with the Ohio State University to talk to some technology companies there. Vital to the economic development effort is business retention and expansion, which happens to be my area of focus and passion. And we will be continuing to work with the city of Columbus Economic Development Team to go out and proactively reach out to existing companies to make sure that their needs are being met here in the city of Columbus. We're gonna continue our aggressive marketing and communications campaign, and hopefully it will continue to contribute to accolades such as city of Columbus being the fastest-growing market in the Midwest and fastest-growing job creator in the Midwest. So really fantastic things are happening here, and we're proud to be a part of it with the city team. We also have committed resources, staffing, and funding to help increase foreign trade and investment. So in addition to trying to attract foreign investment into the city of Columbus, we have a goal and active effort around trying to increase exporting from employers here in the city of Columbus to increase trade out of the market, and that's going very, very well. And with that, I think I'll pause and open to questions if you have them.
Yep. Thank you so much, Patty. Do any of my colleagues have questions about 2020? I know we're all familiar with the good work that you do, and I appreciate you being willing to come in and put a fine point on all those excellent things that we see happening in our region and our city that I know 2020 is an integral part of making happen and of increasing the Columbus brand around the country and world. So thank you for what you do for that, Patty.
Our pleasure.
And tell your whole team thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, well, seeing no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, in economic development, we have ordinance number 829-2016, to authorize the Director of Development on behalf of the city to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with Lifestyle Communities Limited to provide for the construction and financing of public infrastructure improvements within and around the tax increment financing area created by ordinance 2117-2005, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. Next, we have ordinance number 844-2016. Is Jordan Davis here? Yeah, can you make your way, please? As Jordan's making her way, I will read the ordinance. It is to authorize the Director of Development to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Central Ohio and the Columbus Foundation to support the Create Columbus Young Professionals Grants Programming and Operations, to authorize the expenditure of $80,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Welcome back to council, Jordan.
Thank you.
And I know we celebrated one of the young professionals that the Create Columbus Commission is working with recently, but specifically, I'd like you to speak to the investment that we're making here and how it makes a difference for young professionals in Columbus.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President Klein and Chair Brown, members of council. I want to specifically thank all of you for the, going with us on this journey with the commission. It's been about four years. We've completely overhauled, reorganized ourselves, but the impetus of doing that was this grant program of which you're going to hopefully continue to fund. It was four years ago, and we funded, we got organized, and since then, we've now awarded over $200,000 in grants, in community grants. And recently, last month, Forbes recognized Columbus as one of the top cities for young professionals. And that is because this is a place where you can fulfill your greatest ambition, both professionally and personally. But young professionals are also empowered to make their own future, and not just their own future, their lives, but their own city's future. And this grant program is exactly that. It's empowering young professionals to see opportunity in which our community can be better and giving the resources to show that to others. Because of this program, we've given seed funding to social entrepreneurs that have created organizations like BESA, Columbus Soup. They have almost quadrupled the initial investment that we made within just one year. BESA, we gave the seed funding that now they're a fully functioning nonprofit with a full-time staff and servicing multiple corporations, but they got their first client because of the grant that we gave. We've been able to see critical projects that we knew were on the chopping block, but we were able to bridge the gap. So the Short North Mural Project, when they didn't know who was gonna fund it, we were able to say, this is a critically important project in our neighborhoods, we want to keep it there. Near East Side Hop needed to bring young professionals to the neighborhood when they were first getting started three, three years ago, and we started the Near East Side Hop. We were able to fund that, and now it's a continuing program. Franklinton, as we're bridging the gap to West Franklinton, we've been able to fund the Franklinton Board of Trades activity to attract entrepreneurs to invest in the other side of Franklinton. And we really believe that we're on the ground noticing these opportunities, and thank you for giving us the vehicle to make this impact. We believe we've done it in a really accountable way. We believe we've done it in a really efficient way. But we also believe that we've proved that there's greater opportunity, and with your continuing support, we're positioning ourselves to grow this. We created a relationship with the Columbus Foundation, and we've opened up a fund there where we will be administering our grants out of. They will be a very strong partner to us and only allowing us to be even more effective with our means. But this also creates an opportunity for us to find additional support from the county and others. So we're really proud of this. We're really grateful for the privilege to be able to invest and find opportunities like this, and so we thank you for your continued support. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and thank you, Jordan, for your leadership and really providing a voice for young professionals in the community. As the young professional community grows in Columbus, how do folks find out about serving on the commission and being engaged that way?
Yeah, so we actually just re-overhauled our website. One of our commissioners was able to do that for us, and we're creating a, or did create a form where people can put themselves on our radar, or they can put others on our radar. And that's a really good first step for us to continue a long-term prospect engagement process and not just an annual engagement process for prospects, which we will do our next round in August for appointments. And we usually try to appoint between 6:00 and 11:00 every year, never going over 33 as our total board count. But we believe that we've done a really good job in diversity. Where we'd like to improve is in the new American communities, and we think that we've been intentional about trying to reach out into those communities, and hopefully we'll find some great young professionals that want to serve. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Jordan, thank you so much for coming in and sharing, and thank you for your personal leadership and the expenditure of so much time, so many hours, to transform the Create Columbus Commission and do good work like this.
Any time, it's worth it.
Thank you. With no further questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. The final item in economic development tonight, go back to page seven, it was removed from consent, page seven of the agenda. It is ordinance number 848-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to accept, to, to accept title to certain properties owned by NWD 500 Nationwide LLC and 400 West Nationwide Boulevard LLC, and to quitclaim title to those properties back to NWD 500 Nationwide LLC and 400 West Nationwide Boulevard LLC, reserving easement rights for any existing city-owned utilities, and to declare an emergency. I'd first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. And next, if there are no questions, I'd like to move for passage as amended.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in economic development committee, and is it okay if I continue with administration committee back on page 11? Thank you. In administration committee this evening, we have ordinance number 767-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with the Greater Columbus Sports Commission to appropriate $25,000 in the general fund neighborhood initiative subfund, to authorize the transfer of $50,000 between departments within the general fund, to authorize an expenditure of $75,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions? I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is the Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in Public Safety Committee, we have ordinance number 0758 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter a contract with Community Crime Patrol for the purpose of providing citizen patrol services to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $25,000 in the general fund, Public Safety Initiative subfund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions from any colleagues? Please.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that you recognizing me, just to make some quick comments about this investment on the South Side, and I certainly want to appreciate, or thank you and appreciate the leadership that you have shown, Councilmember Brown, in chairing Public Safety and helping the South Side get an extension of Community Crime Patrol services. Last fall, I met with neighborhood and community leaders along with representatives from the Division of Police, including Chief Jacobs and my staff, to look at how we could expand Community Crime Patrol in the Southern Gateway area. And we were able to come up with a plan to do that through a partnership with private sector to help invest over $70,000 with this chunk coming from the city and the remaining coming from our private sector friends to make it happen. Community Crime Patrol does not substitute for law enforcement, but it does help amplify safety presence and to improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And it's my hope that this will be followed by future announcements of how CCP can be expanded into other neighborhoods in the City of Columbus. I'd like to also thank Reverend John Edgar from Church for All People, Nationwide Children's Hospital, particularly Angela Mingo, and Ellen Moore, who I know is here, who is the executive director of Community Crime Patrol. So we appreciate that, and again, hopefully this is the first of a few announcements of how CCP, which is already operating in a lot of our neighborhoods, can continue to be a presence to amplify Columbus Police Department, the great men and women of CPD. Thank you.
Hearing no additional questions, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
That's all I have tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation. Councilmember Shannon Harden chairs that committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 0744-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to execute those documents necessary to grant an aerial encroachment easement to the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority, allowing a pedestrian bridge to extend over public right-of-way over East Goodell Street. Normally, this would be a perfect example of a consent piece of legislation because it's just providing the ability to grant that encroachment easement. But I wanted to use this as an opportunity to highlight 800 new parking spots coming to the Short North, an area that with density of folks, not just on the weekends, but with small businesses, we in Public Service are working towards a parking solution, and I think that these 800 new parking spots, as well as the Short North Parking Study, are us moving towards that goal of having more parking options for employees, for patrons, and for all of us to enjoy the Short North. So with that, if there are no question or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And lastly, I have 0862-2016 to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands Inc. for arterial street rehabilitation, Hamilton Road Phase B S-Curve project, to authorize the Director of the city auditor, and to direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $7,805,451.82 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $7,805,451.82, or so much thereof as may be necessary from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund to pay the contract and declare an emergency. 0862-2016 allows the city to begin construction on the Hamilton Road S-Curve. This project will create a new Hamilton Road corridor to align existing North Hamilton Road from East Dublin-Gramville Road to State Route 161. For those that frequent the area, the project will provide much-needed traffic relief to an area that has exploded in terms of development. Additionally, the S-Curve will serve as a catalyst for further development in the City of Columbus. This project is much-needed for the area, and I really can't begin soon enough. So if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. The next committee is Recreation and Parks. Councilmember Driza Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 584-2016 to authorize and direct the transfer of $182,489 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for a Title III A project grant match and to declare an emergency. Title III A is a federal grant awarded from the Older Americans Act, and the III A portion is awarded exclusively for area agency on aging administrative expenses. And this ordinance will continue to support the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and their salaries of certain employees. I would just like to urge my colleagues to support this ordinance. We are very excited about their new home that they moved into not too long ago, and just want to continue to support this agency and our aging residents. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
I'd like to request a voice vote, please.
Clerk call the roll by voice if there's a second.
Second.
It's second. By voice.
Ms. Brown.
Abstain.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Stenziano.
Yes.
President Klein.
Yes, legislation is defeated because it's for an emergency. So if there is a motion to amend to declare a 30-day legislation?
Actually, can we?
Or would you like to table it for one week, but we should have a motion to reconsider?
Yes. I would like to first motion to reconsider the ordinance.
Clerk call the roll by voice for motion to reconsider.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Ms. Brown, do you want to abstain on this vote for reconsideration?
Voting to reconsider it or voting?
We're voting to reconsider. Do you want to abstain on this vote for reconsideration? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, yes.
Abstention.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Stenziano.
Yes.
President Klein.
Yes. Motion carries to reconsider.
I now motion to table this ordinance until our next meeting.
Okay, motion to table it for one week by voice vote?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown. Harden.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Stenziano. President Klein.
Yes, table it one week.
Thank you. I have nothing further this evening, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our final committee tonight is Public Utilities chaired by Michael Stenziano.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities, we have ordinance 627-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a grant agreement with the Grange Insurance Autobahn Center for the development of the STEM curriculum and at the same time ensure integration between the STEM curriculum and the interactive stormwater exhibits for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, Stormwater and Regulatory Management section, and authorize the expenditure of $50,000 from the Storm Sewer Operating Fund. The purpose of this legislation is to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a grant agreement with the Grange Insurance Autobahn Center for the development of STEM curriculum. The current curriculum available focuses on birds, habitats, particularly aquatic habitats, and the conservation, including the green lead features of the center and the metro park as a whole. The goal of the curriculum is to educate students from kindergarten to high school to identify, understand, and demonstrate their knowledge of watersheds, runoff, and impact on water quality, and engage students in analyzing the current environment and infrastructure. I'm confident our students will enjoy the exhibit, and we too can visit someday and design our own stormwater management systems. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That is all we have in my committees tonight, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. Any other business to come before council before we go to the non-agenda portion, and then we reconvene? It's only 5:44, so we have zoning at 6:30. Can I ask a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll for adjournment.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers, which we have six signed up momentarily. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Okay, we'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Our first ordinance this evening is 0711-2016 to rezone 1414 Broadview Avenue, 43212, being 1.1 acres located on the east side of Broadview Avenue, 377 feet north of West Third Avenue, from R4 Residential District to AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Snyder Baker Acquisitions LLC, care of Dave Perry, agent. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommended approval. I would now like to ask for staff presentation. Thank you, Mrs. Klein.
Good evening. The 1.1 acre site consists of seven parcels zoned in the R4 Residential District. The site is developed with five two-unit dwellings and one four-unit dwelling. The applicant proposes the AR3 Apartment Residential District to allow redevelopment of the site with an apartment building to consist of no more than 66 units. The site is located within the boundaries of the Fifth by Northwest Neighborhood Plan, which recommends medium-density mixed residential uses for this location. Redevelopment in the medium-density mixed residential areas must demonstrate that it will not adversely impact the existing nature of the area and be consistent with the residential design guidelines set forth in the neighborhood plan. Given the existing presence of multifamily residential uses to the south, west, and east of the property and its proximity to Grandview Avenue, staff finds the proposed use and zoning to be compatible with the established development pattern of the area. A companion council variance, which is next ordinance 0714-2016, has been filed to vary building height, maneuvering, parking space, landscaping and screening, building coverage, building lines, and rear yard standards. Staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would now like to ask the agent for the applicant, Mr. Perry, to come forward.
Good evening, Council President Klein and all members of council. My name is Dave Perry. I'm the agent for Snyder Barker Acquisitions for this development project. We are proposing to rezone the site to the AR3 District for multifamily development. There's a companion variance ordinance also. The project is supported by Fifth by Northwest Area Commission, city staff, the Columbus Development Commission, and we have been through preliminary engineering review with the City of Columbus also and have support of the engineering aspects of the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Are there any questions? I would now like to ask Mr. Michael Story to come forward. He is speaking for the ordinance. There are two companion ordinances, and I would just actually go ahead and speak on this one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Story. I'm a member of the Broadview Muse condo association board, and so we're the property immediately to the south of this development. Our board is generally supportive of this development. We've seen issues with the neighboring property immediately to our north, where we've seen a dumpster place there for a considerable amount of time. Currently, this development has a total of four parking spaces for 14 units, and with this change, excuse me, for 12 units. Correct, 12, 14? Yeah, so there's several units there, and only four of them actually have parking, so presumably the rest are parking on the street. With this development, we will actually see more parking available off-street because there's, this development will actually have more than 100 parking spaces in it. We are also open to different, one of the other questions that our board had for this developer was related to egress toward Broadview Avenue. One of the issues that we've had with our neighborhood in general is that we've had a lot of people who just walk through our neighborhood, and we wanted to make sure that this was not going to increase traffic through our complex, which really is just walking down our street, which obviously for our organization adds liability. And they are planning to add egress directly toward Broadview Avenue, which would be beneficial to us, as well as having guest parking for guests of the complex. So those are kind of some of our concerns, because we didn't really want it obviously impeding on our complex. By and large, the most of the other houses on, or properties on Broadview Avenue are also multifamily, generally considerably fewer units, but also multifamily units on the opposite side of the street. And so we, you know, we see this as consistent with the development, and will be considerably nicer as our neighborhood to the north relative to current development. And so, you know, with the understanding regarding egress as well as parking, we are supportive of this development.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Are there any questions? I would now like to ask Mr. James Oberla to speak against this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Oberla.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is James Oberla. I am the owner of, with my wife, of 1423, 25, 1429, and 1433 Broadview. We are also almost an acre. We have eight units, a lot of green space. It's very nice, very residential feeling. I am against the zoning, rezoning, and the variances for 1414. The building structure adversely affects the surrounding neighborhood and the properties. We are opposed to that for the reasons that follow. The proposed structure is too tall. Even at 35-foot, the limit for the AR3 zoning and the request for 45-foot is much too tall for the neighborhood. The height will very negatively impact the surrounding properties due to the blocking of there and therefore loss of sunlight, airflow. It'll definitely cast a huge shadow on the neighborhood. The proposed structure is too massive. The footprint is too big. There will be a huge loss of green space and mature trees. There will be no backyard green space. The project lacks enough green space to support the amount of tenants. The setback of the structure from the street is the smallest of all buildings on the street, much too close, and the small setback increases the overbearing feeling of the structure. The population density is too great. It will be at least five times the density of the current properties. What about the infrastructure, sewer systems? I know they just relined Broadview this last year. Is it up to snuff for these many units in this much-new population? The population increase will have a negative impact on traffic on Broadview Avenue. Increased density will cause increased traffic, and this street is already very busy. The increased population will have a negative impact on already crowded street parking. Parking on Broadview Avenue is at a premium, as earlier spoke. There is no doubt that the addition of this structure, that parking will become even worse. that parking will become even worse. Tenants will have visitors which need parking. There will be a parking deficit. In order to impact, note not to have an impact on current parking situation, they would need to have three spots per unit, two cars for each visit, two cars for each owner and tenant, and one for a visitor. In conclusion, the building, this structure as presented, is not consistent with surrounding neighborhoods and properties. We are confident that is, is very, there is a viable way to develop this property in a manner that will enhance the neighborhood instead of being so overbearing. We are against it at this size and scale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oberla. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I would like to move to our next speaker, Rachel Kuhar, who is speaking against this ordinance. Thank you for coming down, Ms. Kuhar.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Rachel Kuhar. I own the building at 1415 Broadview Avenue, and I also reside there. My building sits directly across from the proposed building site known as 1414 Broadview Avenue. I would like to speak to the zoning request. Currently, on the east side of Broadview Avenue, which is the same side that the developer wants to build the sixty-six apartment units, currently between Ida Avenue and the condos known as the Mews, there are all doubles and one four-family unit. On the west side of Broadview Avenue, the side that my building is on, from Ida Avenue to my building, there is a one single-family residence, two and several two-family residences, and two four-family residences. Continuing past my building on the west side of Broadview Avenue to West Third Avenue, there is one building with a sixteen one-bedroom apartment units, one building with sixteen one-bedroom condominium units, two single-family homes and two doubles. There are no heights over thirty-five feet on any of the buildings and residences on Broadview Avenue. The building that is proposed to be built at 1414 Broadview Avenue is a huge development that dramatically impacts the existing neighborhood, and it will adversely affect the surrounding properties and neighborhood with its high density and increased traffic. Next, I would like to speak to the variance request, height, to permit a maximum height of forty-five feet. This is a twenty-eight percent variance request from AR3. I live right across from the street from the proposed building site. I enjoy the light, the sunrise, and the view. If the height variance is granted, I will not be able to see the sun until it rises over the top of the building. The variance from thirty-five feet to a maximum of forty-five feet will definitely impair light and air to the adjacent properties. The parking that is being current proposed by the developer is nowhere near satisfactory. Currently, many of the residents on Broadview Avenue use the available parking spaces. Lawn mowing companies use the spaces. Delivery trucks use the spaces. Every single parking space is taken every evening from 5:00 p.m. on throughout the night. Where will the guests of the tenants of the proposed 1414 Broadview Avenue park? When the old Giant Eagle gets developed, which was located on the corner of Broadview Avenue and Fifth Avenue, when it gets developed, there will be an additional burden of congestion on Broadview Avenue. In the variance request of the basis of computing area, from fifty percent to sixty-three percent, this is a request for twenty... Sorry, should I stop?
Thank you, Ms. Kuhar.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me.
I do actually have a question for you.
Yes.
You said that the cars are parking in the parking spaces. Is that on the street, or were you referring to specific parking spaces?
There are not specific parking spaces. They are just parking available on the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kuhar. Councilman Harden has a question.
Just a quick question. Your unit, is it a single-family or?
It is a four-family unit.
Four-family unit, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Kuhar? Thank you so much for coming down. Do we have a representative of the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission here this evening? No, we do not. I would now like to ask the applicant, Mr. Perry, to come, and you have an additional three minutes to respond.
Sure, thank you. The, there are portions of the Fifth by Northwest Commission area that are heavily single-family and heavily owner-occupied. This, this street is not one of them. On the, on the east side of Broadview, we have the Broadview Mews project built abutting us to the south. It was built about 2008. It's a condominium project. Then there's our site, then there's a handful of additional older two-family, and then there's the former Giant Eagle site facing Fifth Avenue. On the west side of Broadview, there are high-density apartment buildings. There are two-family dwellings. There are four-family dwellings. And we have looked at the titles to them, and there, there are a couple units that are owner-occupied, but they are heavily, heavily rental. There are comparable buildings in the area, in terms of both density and height. On parking, we have a very interesting situation on parking. When we, when we started working on this project and designing it, to us, it was a given that we would meet code-required parking, and this project does meet code-required parking. It has a hundred parking spaces. The, the area plan, there's comments, I want to distinguish between the comments about what's there versus what the city adopted land plan has, the Fifth by Northwest Area Plan recommends up to fifty-five units per acre. Bonuses for structured parking, which we have, bonuses for exceptional architecture, which everyone has acknowledged that we have. So it's not, it's not so much a question of are there, are there some four, or two families on this site? Are there some two families to the north of the site? The site to the north with some two families on it, also all rental property, very likely will be redeveloped also in time, particularly after the Giant Eagle, whatever is to happen with the Giant Eagle site is determined. On parking, we, this project removes fourteen units, so we, it's, it's a net gain of fifty-two with taking out the fourteen units that are there. There are four parking spaces. The sum of the onsite parking for the fourteen units is four parking spaces, and that's the four-family that we directly abut. The other, the other ten units have no onsite parking. Clearly, they are parking on Broadview. We are, we are removing that situation and complying fully with code-required parking for this, for this proposed building. We have, on setback, this has been through a considerable review with the zoning and planning staff, the area commission, the development commission, and so on. The building is designed in a U-shaped pattern with the open courtyard facing Broadview, so the, there, the effect of the facade is not a continuous frontage on, on Broadview. We can, I'd be glad to address other points. One thing, the comments about blocking light and air, the closest building across the street is a hundred and ten feet. Clearly, this building does not block light and air from those homes. So, thank you. Are there questions?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Are there any? Councilman Brown?
The one gentleman may comment about sewer lines. Did anyone discuss that?
Yes, we've, when I work on a development project, I'm working on zoning, I'm also asking the questions about, about sewer and stormwater grading and all the aspects that go into the development of a project. The civil engineers on this project have worked with the Public Utilities Department on sanitary sewer. It complies. We also did the Building and Zoning Services Review Process for, called Preliminary Site Compliance Plan Review, and the project was acceptable.
Thank you.
What's the height difference between the Mews and this project?
They are measured differently, Council President, because the Mews has a peaked roof. This building has a flat roof. So we are, we have set a maximum height in the ordinance request of forty-five feet. Between the architects and the engineers, I believe we're going to be at about forty-three, forty-three point five. The forty-five was set at a maximum because until the final grades of the structured parking level below the building are determined and the floor-to-floor heights and so on are determined exactly, we, we just don't know if we're going to be at forty-three, forty-three, five, forty-four. So the ordinance sets a maximum of forty-five, and that's, this is a flat-roof building. Broadview Mews is approximately forty-two feet to the ridge rather than the midpoint of the roof. They're measured differently depending on the roof style, but it's approximately forty-two feet to the ridge. There's a, there's a project on Third called Windsor Arms, very high-density project and three-story building. This, this building is three-story. What's pushing the height up on this a little bit is, is, you know, there's always a trade-off on designing a building. The, the structured parking is desirable to use that lower level below the building, but typically that pushes a building up a little bit. So this, this first-floor grade is about three feet above grade in order to accommodate the structured parking and meet all the code-required parking. So there's a lot of factors at work. Is, is this building unusual for the area or the only building of that height in the area? No. Is, is this an urban environment where, where everything needs to look the same and have the same development standards? No, clearly, clearly it's not. So it's...
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Perry. Ms. Pine, could you talk briefly about the Northwest, the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission meeting and the vote that was taken there?
Sure. We sent the application to them shortly after receiving it, and they met on January 5th, 2016. Their recommendation was unanimous for approval, seven to zero. And they did have some conditions for the council variance, which are included in the next ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. If there are no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I would like to move for passage of this ordinance.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. We now have the companion ordinance to the first one, 0714-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.21d1 landscaping and screening, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space, 3333.15c basis of computing area, 3333.18 building lines, 3333.24 rear yard, and 3333.26 height district of the Columbus City Codes, and for the property located at 1414 Broadview Avenue 43212, to permit a multi-unit residential development with a maximum of sixty-six units with reduced development standards in the AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Snyder Baker Acquisitions LLC, care of Dave Perry, agent. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommended approval. Unless my colleagues have any additional questions, I think a lot of the issues were discussed. I would now like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
I would now like to move for passage as amended.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Ordinance 0787-2016, to rezone 5858 Sol Mill Road 43017, being 10.76 acres located on the east side of Sol Mill Road, 225 feet north of Cranston Drive, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Home Depot, care of Paul Phillips, attorney. The proposed use is to revise the outdoor display areas and add truck rental to home improvement center. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Northwest Civic Association recommended approval. I would just like to ask staff to speak briefly about going from Commercial Plan Development District to CPD, just so we're all clear on that.
I'm sorry, I, did you want a brief presentation?
Yes, it was fine. Thank you.
I got distracted, sorry. Yeah, this, so this CPD Commercial Plan Development District, when it was originally zoned for the Home Depot, had specific areas and size limitations of their outdoor display and seasonal display. Unfortunately, they were unaware of that recently, and they started, they started a Penske truck rental program, and those trucks were parked in the parking lot, not in designated seasonal display areas. Plus, they increased some of the size of that seasonal display. So they worked with the Northwest Civic Association, got their approval recommendation, and they will be submitting for zoning clearance once this ordinance is in effect. And Development Commission approved it, and city staff approved it.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We have ordinance 0799-2016 to amend ordinance number 1071-2006, pass July 24th, 2006, by repealing Section 3 and replacing it with new Section 3, thereby modifying the planned unit development text in Sub Area 1 to permit garage-forward design alternatives for a single-unit residential development within property located at 5797 Shannon Road 43110. The applicant is Miranda Holmes Incorporated, care of Daniel Schettinger, attorney. The proposed use is a change in development standards for single-family, multifamily, and commercial developments. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Greater Southeast Area Commission recommended approval. I would first like to move to amend this ordinance to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
I now move for passage as amended.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. And our final ordinance this evening is 0835-2016, to rezone 4476 North High Street 43214, being .5 acres located at the southeast corner of High Street and Dominion Boulevard, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Dominion High Acquisition LLC, care of Catherine Cunningham, attorney. The proposed use is mixed-use commercial and residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Clintonville Area Commission recommended approval. There are no questions or comments. I would like to move for passage of this ordinance.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. Think we have any other business coming before council on zoning or any other business? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll on adjournment.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.